For Wednesday, July 17th, 2019 to order. Thank you. He's putting a lot of pressure on me, that's my colleague here. At this time for our moment of silence, you know, it is, I'm really delighted that my friend, Mayor Tomes, is here. But it's such a great opportunity when all of the five major mayors, but also beyond that, the two county board supervisor chairs as well, as the garrison commander, who's actually the mayor of the island, is also part of it, all of us working together, but all of people throughout the Quad Cities working together is so much more productive. And I think we find that, and hopefully we can be an example for all of our citizens throughout the Quad Cities to work together for the goodness of our whole community. So with that, let's stop for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Dunn, would you help Mayor Tomes and I do the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, would you call the roll, please?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Tomkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clule.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Dunn.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Brian. And again, a good evening. As we begin this meeting of our city council, I would again like to welcome all of those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television through the Internet or online. We expect to be welcome, all of your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our online broadcasts. We are happy that you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask you to turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices as they can interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item on a discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business, which will occur towards the end of the meeting. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by the committee chair or myself, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So again, thank you all for being here. Do we have a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have five public hearings this evening. Our first is under the area of community development, and Alderman Rossen is going to lead those discussions.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three public hearings under community development this evening. I open the first public hearing on the proposed conveyance of the vacated public right-of-way known as the east-west portion of Crestline Drive, located west of the north-south alley, lying west of Marlowe Avenue. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, I close this public hearing. There's been a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed, same sign? The second public hearing this evening is on the proposed conveyance of the vacated public right-of-way known as a portion of Forest Grove Court, where there are multiple abutting property owners who are the petitioners. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, I close this public hearing. Make a motion. There's been a second, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, same sign? And the final public hearing for community development this evening is for case REZ-19-08, a request to rezone 3870 Rockingham Road from R4C Single and Two-Family Central Residential District to SOS Special Open Space District. And this is for the follow-up for the, excuse me, Fairmont Cemetery and Crematory Association, who is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed, same sign? And Your Honor, back to you, that closes out.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Our next area for public hearings is Public Works, and Alderman Dunn will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one public hearing for Public Works this evening. I open the public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the FY20 threshold street resurfacing program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I move to close this public hearing. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, same sign? And this public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Our third area for public hearing is finance. Alderman Mattson will run that, control that power, public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing on finance, authorizing the city to sell city-owned parcels Echo 0014-12 and Echo 0014-13, both along the 1400 block of Christie Street. Willis and Renee Simmons are the petitioners. Is there anyone from the public like to comment on this public hearing? Hearing and seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Very good, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. We have no public presentations this evening, but under petitions and communications from the council and myself, we're going to open up with Alderman McGinnis, our community engagement chair.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a few things tonight regarding the heat and a couple of other things as well. Let's get the events first. Everyone is invited to Save Our Streets. It's on Saturday, July 20th, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Cedar Memorial Christian Church, 401 Cedar Street. There's games for the kids, music and fun, and I hope you can join us for this free event. The church building will be open to allow folks attending to cool off, since the event is an outside event. And something coming up tomorrow night, also in an air-conditioned space. Not content with conquering Europe during World War II, the Nazis looted millions of dollars in fine art from their victims. As allied forces began the counterattack across the continent, Iowan and nationally-known art conservator George Stout became one of the leading lights of the monuments men. We've heard of these people before, a group of men and women intent on recovering stolen treasures. So Stout-hearted George Stout and the Guardians of Art is a new documentary that tells the story of this Iowan's life. You can see it for free Thursday night, tomorrow night, July 18th, at 6:00 p.m. in the air-conditioned comfort of the Figgy's John Deere Auditorium. It'll be followed by a discussion, and just a reminder that admission is free to the Figgy now through August 11th. And finally, of course, you've heard that we have had to, we did have to counsel a party in the park at Whalen Park for tomorrow because of the heat. We will be rescheduling it in the near future and will be announcing that date. And temperatures will be dangerously warm through the end of the week. The city has several locations that will serve as cooling shelters in addition to their regular function. Those buildings include the River's Edge, which is open Thursday through Sunday, and it does go into the evening on some of those dates as well and throughout the day. The Roosevelt Community Center will be open Thursday and Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and all three of our library locations, which are open Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. In addition to that, Davenport City Bus will be providing free bus service Thursday, July 18th through Saturday, July 20th, to help connect individuals with places that they can chill out. Again, this is going to be dangerous temperatures. In addition to the places I've mentioned, some other places that might be not free, but might be of interest, the pool, the Dos Pool is a three-minute walk from stop at the South Concord on Route 1. The Federary Family Aquatic Center is just a four-minute walk from the stop at Ninth and Division on Route 9. The Annie Wittenmeyer Family Aquatic Center is located along Route 2. So please be careful, stay hydrated, stay in if you can, and try to stay cool through this. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman McGinnis. And again, I want to thank you, the continuation of our Parties in the Park program. I think it was a wise decision to postpone this one we had because of the upcoming heat, but the crowds have been great, and I want to thank you for that again. Our next, Alderman Tomkins, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. And just interesting, it wasn't quite six months ago that we were having these same conversations because of the cold weather, so stay tuned next month, who knows? So thank you, staff, for putting all those things and making, helping make people be safe and be comfortable. So I just wanted to throw out there that Monday at 6:30, I have a ward meeting at the Eastern Avenue Library. The police department will be presenting some tips, some safety tips, and just kind of what's going on in their department around the community. So hope to see you there. You don't have to be in the eighth ward, everybody is welcome, and again, it's at 6:30. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Tomkins. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to remind everybody, Friday and Saturday at St. Ambrose University Rogowski Center, 9:00 to 3:00, both days, is the Veterans Action Day. The VA will actually have people there that if you have issues, they'll have their computer set up that they can input the information right there, instead of just handing you a pamphlet and give you a number and call, and you set up an appointment or do, they will actually have lawyers, counselors, VA people that can do the work right there so people can be taken care of on those two days. So 9:00 to 3:00, St. Ambrose University Rogowski Center, a Veterans Action Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. And Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. We talked about this yesterday at our management update, but I wanted to give an update to the council as well as the people of Davenport on the Joint Task Force, the group that was charged with looking at the railroad crossings on the riverfront that were affected by Canadian Pacific raising the railroad tracks. That group has been meeting for about a month now, it seems, and while the conversations were pretty slow initially, in the last week to two weeks, we've made some really good gains. And the group that is comprised of aldermen, some riverfront improvement commissioners, and then our city staff have gotten to the point where we are requesting 30% drawings from, for all of the intersections, with the exception of River Heritage Park. There's still some discussions there to be had with CP, so we haven't reached anything there, but the hope is that staff goes back and meets with CP this week, and then hopefully they can start on those 30% drawings. And then when we get the 30% drawings for each crossing, I would envision that at that time we'll probably bring them back to the council to say, here is what that work group has so far, what do you think about these? Give us a little bit of direction, and then I think we'll continue to meet as that joint task force group as we go through the process, 30, 50, 70, and 90% drawings. Of course, the further you get in the process, the more money has been put in design, so the designs will get more clear, and every step forward we take, we want to make sure that we're taking the appropriate step. So that is my update, and more to come as this progresses.
Alderman Gripp, would you mind sharing, again, what we've seen now is just temporary, the things that have been put in so far, and what, 30% of what and so forth? Might help explain that a little bit, if you would.
So what is on the riverfront now is they, CP had to make sure that we had access at the intersection. So what you're seeing there is asphalt, and it's temporary, and it will be changed to a more permanent design, a design that maintains access to our riverfront, is aesthetically pleasing, and then also fits in with the riverfront Main Street Landing project that we have planned. What was your other question? So the 30% drawing is a, it's a technical drawing. It's basically a blueprint that shows roughly what this is going to look like, and then each level, you go to 50% drawing. It is a little bit clearer blueprint with a little bit more detail, and each step of the way, you go to 70%, and again, you're getting a little bit more detail of exactly what that's going to look like.
Thank you very much, Alderman Gripp. We'll do those questions at the end when the public with business portion happens, okay? We wait till the end. A couple items I just wanted to share. Our next, first of all, the task force, the flood task force, we had our first meeting last Tuesday, about 22 people in a full room, full of people as well, which we're delighted to see. Great discussion, grew up in the groups. We have a really, probably one of the broader cross-section of people in our community, residents, business owners, Corps of Engineers, the National Weather Service, and on and on. Corps of Engineers were there as well. So that was a good first session. We're going to report back what the final results were from that meeting next Tuesday, and just want to let you know, our next meeting will be Tuesday at the lower level of the Main Street Library. There'll be more room, because that was a concern we had, that room was full. So it'll be the lower level of the Main Street Library, and you'll be able to have a little more room to see that. You're all open to the public and welcome for people to attend. Chief, could you mind coming up just for a moment and talk a little bit about the PSP program that's coming up on the following Wednesday, just to give a heads up or a little bit of understanding of what that is? I'm going to be attending that, and I think it's good to know how much we're involved on a broader scale as well as locally.
Sure. Paul Sikorski, your police chief. So we were, through some assistance through city administration, selected as a city to partake in the public safety partnership with Department of Justice. So next Wednesday, we'll have our kickoff meeting, and that will include, I know you'll be there, Mayor, Alderwoman Dickman will be there, but all of the federal agencies that we have around our area, ATF, FBI, DEA, our U.S. attorneys, Scott County Attorney, all the local police departments, sheriff's departments. We are going to be discussing what our current strategy is for fighting violent crime here in Davenport, and we, over the next three years, it's a three-year commitment, we will be exploring state-of-the-art things that are going around the nation, so different techniques for fighting violent crime, but also crime prevention, all sorts of different techniques, crime analysis. So we're real excited about it. Just before today's meeting, I was on the phone with the U.S. attorney here in Iowa. We were discussing, so we're going to have another phone call next Tuesday prior to our Wednesday meeting, but it's a great way to connect all of our pieces with local law enforcement from Iowa and Illinois, and to, and get some state-of-the-art training and techniques from around the nation.
Thank you, Chief, very much. And again, thank you for your leadership, and with city administration's leadership, bringing this collection of people together, another good example of all of us in the Quad Cities coming together. So thank you, Chief. Just wanted to note as well, we'll be celebrating over the next week, Hamilton Tech's 50th anniversary of supporting and educational development here in our city. Also, we have, I think was already mentioned, Save the Streets event, which is happening this weekend. A number of us will be there. It's again, people coming together, talking about how we can come together as a community and protect our neighborhoods and be more communicative and in partnership with the people around. Also, another good point of having my friend Mayor Tomes here, on Friday, the, again, all of the five major cities, plus the two county board chairs and the administrators, we're going to be meeting at Cobbum for our monthly meeting. As you know, Cobbum's in Davenport, a very large, growing company, and doing work literally for the, around the world, some amazing stuff that they're doing and growing rapidly. So we're going to have a meeting there to tour that facility. And lastly, we've been sending out, many of you, or some of you may have received that, some in the room have already gone through our Citizens Academy, but in addition to that, there's a lot of boards and commissions and committees. We have, we'll have 60 openings over the next year for boards, commissions, and committees. And we have 13 different boards and commissions that we fill people on. So we would ask that, we're committed to filling those vacancies as quickly as possible. Again, a quick overview, if someone's term is coming, ready to expire, I reach out to them, call them, talk to them personally, ask if they're interested in continuing. They can then reapply with new people. Then we go through a process after interviewing, I interview all of them, and then decide how we can best fill those positions. Again, some criterion, or gender equity, make sure they're balanced by gender, based by a lot of racial diversity as well. So we go through that whole process. So we would like, you can go online and fill out an application, so we're looking forward to having those on file, so as those openings come up, we can be able to fill those. So again, thank you all for all your information. Tonight, we're going to move into our action items for discussion. The first area to be discussed is community development, and Alderman Rossen will lead that discussion, and Alderman Ambrose will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have five items under community development this evening. The first item is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ-19-08, request to rezone 3870 Rockingham Road from R4C Single and Two-Family Central Residential District to SOS Special Open Space District, which is related to the Fairmont Cemetery and Crematory Association, which is the petitioner. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of the vacated public right-of-way known as the east-west portion of Crestline Drive, located west of the north-south alley, lying west of Marlowe Avenue. 2950 Crestline LLC is the petitioner. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the Certified Local Government National Register Nomination Evaluation Report Form for the downtown Rock Island Historic District, which includes Centennial Bridge in Third Ward. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. The final item under community development is a resolution updating the city of Davenport hazard mitigation actions listed as part of the Scott County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, case number CP-17-01, dated 11/15/2017. To include items, the city of Davenport would like to have documented in consideration of grant applications related to flood mitigation. And I'd like to ask Nicole to come up and just define what this is, because it sounds close to flood mitigation. I just want to make sure the public's aware of what hazard mitigation is. Thank you.
So Nicole Gleason, Public Works. Generally, the state opens up after disasters such as this, some grant funding opportunities related to mitigation projects that have been documented, and currently, there is a grant open with the state for hazard mitigation for around 1.8 million. Over the past year, staff's worked diligently to identify some things that would make our flood operational efforts and kind of repair efforts easier and better, cost-effective in the long term. So we wanted to take that opportunity to update the plan now in consideration for this grant cycle being open, and then potentially reopening that mitigation plan again, once the mayor's flood task force has completed, if there's any other changes that they see fit.
So the bottom line in plain English would be, we have the potential to get more reimbursement, more funds.
Correct.
To help us do more things related to the flood.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will also move on. That takes care of community development. I would ask Alderman Ambrose to set the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move all five items to the consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed, same sign? And this concludes community development, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman Rossen and Alderman Ambrose. Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Gripp will lead the discussion, and Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 11 of Chapter 10.96 entitled Resident Parking Only by Adding 12th Street in Front of the Residents at 2215 East 12th Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. I'll read through all of these and then ask for comments at the end. The Office, BIC 7 Party, 116 West 3rd Street, Saturday, July 27th, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., closure Northernmost Parking Lane and Two North Travel Lanes on West 3rd Street between North Main Street and Brady Street. Lexi Ryling, BIC's Porch Party, 321 North Main Street, Thursday, August 1st, 2019, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., closure Main Street from West 4th Street, south to the alley in the middle of the block. Third Missionary Baptist Church Gospel Explosion Weekend, 222 West 14th Street, Friday, August 9th, 2019, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Saturday, August 10th, 2019, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., closure West 14th Street between Harrison Street and Main Street. Frank Burner, Seventh Annual Gene Price Memorial Car Show, 406 West 2nd Street, Saturday, August 10th, 2019, 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., closure West 2nd Street between Ripley Street and Scott Street. Palmer College Homecoming Events, 6:00 a.m., Saturday, August 10th, 2019, through 10:00 a.m., Sunday, August 11th, 2019, closure Two Easternmost Lanes of Brady Street from Eighth to Palmer Drive, Palmer Drive from Brady to Perry Street. Note that this is pending IDOT approval for Brady Street closure. Village of East Davenport Wine Walk fundraiser for Gilda's Club Quad Cities, Saturday, August 17th, 2019, 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., closure East 11th Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Jersey Ridge Road from East 11th Street to East 12th Street, Christie Street from 11th Street north to the alley. Village of East Davenport Farm Days in the Village, Saturday, August 24th, 2019, 5:00 a.m. through Sunday, August 26th, 2019, 6:00 p.m., closure East 11th Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from East 11th Street north to the alley. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on any of those closures? Anyone from council? Seeing no one, these items will move on. Item number three is a motion approving noise variance requests for various events listed on the dates and times. The Office, BIC 7 Party, 116 West 3rd Street, Saturday, July 27th, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. Lexi Ryling, BIC's Porch Party, 321 North Main Street, Thursday, August 1st, 2019, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. Palmer College Homecoming Events, 1000 Brady Street, Thursday, August 8th, 2019, through Saturday, August 10th, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. each night, outdoor music, band over 50 dB. Third Missionary Baptist Church Gospel Explosion, 222 West 14th Street, Friday, August 9th, 2019, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, August 10th, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. Frank Burner, Seventh Annual Gene Price Memorial Car Show, 406 West 2nd Street, Saturday, August 10th, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., outdoor music, classic cars, over 50 dB. Village of East Davenport Wine Walk fundraiser for Gilda's Club Quad Cities, Saturday, August 17th, 2019, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. Village of East Davenport Farm Days in the Village, Saturday, August 24th, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, August 25th, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., outdoor music, entertainment over 50 dB. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of those noise variance requests? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, those items will move on. Item number four is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. Section A is new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. Front Street Brewery, 208 East River Drive, temporary outdoor area only, July 26th, 27th, 2019, BIC's license type C liquor. Front Street Brewery, 208 East River Drive, temporary outdoor area only, August 23rd and 24th, 2019, alternating currents, license type C liquor. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on either of those items? Anyone from the council? I'll just mention that it's, I'm glad to see that Front Street will be able to have some operations for the BICs, and we're looking forward to getting them back open here sometime in late summer or the fall. Section B is annual license renewals. We do not read those, but they're there for your information, and I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to set the agenda.
I'm sure you really are excited about event season with all that fine reading you get to do there. I will just move that all items be placed on consent.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Dickman. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Dunn will lead the discussion. Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 11 items on the Public Works agenda this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the FY20 threshold street resurfacing program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the FY18 resurfacing program, CIP number 35026. The total contract with Hawkeye Paving Corporation was $1,759,992.21. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting the work completed under the FY18 Johnson Avenue Resurfacing Project. The total contract with Tri-City Blacktop Incorporated was $106,209.18. Is there anyone from the public wishing? Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding the contract for the Green Alley Project to Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the contract for the West High Street Flood Mitigation Project to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of one hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the use of condemnation to acquire the property at ten twenty Warren Street. Before I ask for a comment, can we have someone from staff come up and give us an overview of this resolution?
Brandon Wright, CFO and Assistant City Administrator. The property there at ten twenty Warren, with the natural topography of the, topography, sorry, of the area, it has a lot of stormwater drainage that ends up in that property. We have actually, the city has a storm pump there that pumps that water kind of up and across the street. So it kind of follows the more natural area there for the water. We have been working with the property owner now for a couple of years on this. And we funded it in our last budget to take care of the project. Unfortunately, the project came in and it was way over budget on that. So we approached the property owner with an interest to acquire the property so we could go to a gravity system, which would be significantly less of a cost for us. When we, when we approached the property owner and were discussing with them the price for that, we determined that the, we weren't at an agreeable price. The condemnation process really allows us an opportunity to find fair market value for that property. And so we, this doesn't actually finalize that, that process. It's just authorizing us to use it and to work through that process of finding an appraisal and using all of that to gather that information.
Thanks. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I know this has been a very long process for the city and I appreciate everything that you have tried to do. However, this is a complicated process that, that I have some concerns with. This was a property that the city had a pump. The pump broke. The pump sat broken for a number of years. The, the gentleman who owns this property continued to do work. I think in faith that it was going to be fixed. And I, there's a, a number of emails that went back and forth between the city and the, the owner of this property. There wasn't anything in any of the emails I've seen, I asked to see them from him, that said, "We're going to fix the pump contingent on how much it costs." And I understand fiscal responsibility, but I have a real problem. And, and, and part of it was the people at Public Works changed. There was no written agreement about this. But it was obviously, I think everybody in the email exchanges that I have understood they were working toward, I mean, there was an acceptance that there had been conversations prior. You know, it, it is, and I, I worked last year to try and to, to bring a meeting together and we did meet. And at that point, it seemed like we might have a solution and then the cost came in. So my problem is nothing I can find in the emails talks about contingent on the cost of repairing this pump. So I feel that we haven't made this person whole and I really can't support this. So I, I, I don't know if there's any more that can be done. I don't expect my fellow aldermen to, you know, to follow what I'm doing. But I, I just had to say that I think that, that, you know, people at the city change. This was an ongoing issue and we needed to carry it through or perhaps have been more careful about what we were agreeing to or talking about in the emails because it, it tended to, there was nothing about depending on the cost. And, and that's a little bit troubling to me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom? Can you give a brief explanation of how the condemnation process works?
Sure. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Basically, what's going to happen is we've ordered up an appraisal. We've actually received the appraisal. And that amount will be sent to the homeowner along with the full appraisal. And really what's going on off of that is a negotiation will continue. We'll still try to negotiate out a price to acquire the property. But in the end, if we can't come to an agreement, this resolution allows us to allow the Compensation Commission, which is a group of citizens who are familiar with real estate values, to set a price at which we would complete the transaction and pay the homeowner for the property.
So both sides are negotiating to a compensation board?
Yes. At, at the, at the Compensation Commission level, the citizens will go out and view the property. The homeowner can have their own appraisal done. Both sides will present their information on what they believe the value to be and they'll reach a conclusion.
So the homeowner has the opportunity to make his compelling case and the, the city does?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Grip.
Brandon, could you answer some questions for me, please? Can you, can you help me with the, trying to, trying to, the financials of this? So the initial, the, the pump that we went out to bid for, what type of pump was that?
Oh, uh, that's a good question. It's one that pumps water.
It's not the, it's, it's not, it's not the gravity pump, correct? It's the other kind?
No, so, yeah, so, yeah, we, we had looked at potentially doing a gravity system, but the proximity of the water to the home created some problems for the owner. And so at that point, we reverted back to the pump solution, which was more costly.
What was the price of that pump?
Uh, the, the bid that we-
Yeah, what was the bid?
Was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Two hundred and fifty K? Okay. And so if we were to acquire this property, we would still have to put a pump on the property?
Uh, we would look to institute a, a gravity system there.
At a cost?
At a cost, correct.
Correct. And you're probably looking at, you know, somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and eighty thousand to acquire that property?
Uh, correct.
Correct? Aren't they about the same cost?
The, and then the, the, yes, to get to the, the short answer here, the answer is yes. The result would be that however, moving forward, there wouldn't be any concerns about the pump failing impact to that property over time. Certainly the maintenance of it as well. The gravity system just requires a far less maintenance in, in there. So the, the advantage really to the gravity system is that it, it is much easier to maintain over time and doesn't have to be replaced ongoing when that pump fails yet again at some point in the future.
Okay, so, so the financial benefit to the city would be in ongoing maintenance costs?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. But the upfront costs are, are pretty similar? Okay. So what, you've been doing the negotiations and we've been at this, the emails I saw go back to two thousand and fifteen. So do you think we are at the end of nego, there, there is no way to get there through negotiations? The, the process that we're, you're asking to go through is kind of, we're here now. This is the, is that, is that what you're saying?
So the, in, in dealing with the property owner who's, and, and to kind of go back to Alderman McGinnis's point, we, we realize the fact that the property owner has been through quite a bit with this over time. A lot of different people have looked at this. A lot of people have changed hands. A lot of different ideas have exchanged over time on that. The, the difference between what it is that the city considers at this point to be a fair market value for that home and the cost that, that the property owner believes is that fair market value are, are quite a bit different on there. That, that's why at this point, we're recommending the use of the condemnation process to arrive at what it is, is the actual fair market value of that cost. And whatever it is, I think the city is willing in this pace to pay that fair market value in order to get this accomplished.
Okay. Is there any, is there any risk in this continuing to, to drag on? Any, as far as damage or anything due to the water? Or it's just, we've been, we've been negotiating long enough. You'd like to?
We'd like to kind of get it all wrapped up, to be honest with you.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Brandon.
Alderman Rosson.
Oh, Brandon, come back up. Sorry. I just want to clarify because I can't remember exactly what this information was from a previous meeting. But the home that we're talking about is current, has been empty for some time?
Uh, it's a rental property and, and the property owner has been unable to rent it during the last couple of years. I'm not exactly sure how long that has been, but I know that, that, that there's no one currently occupying it right now.
Okay. Has it been, has it been subject to our, is there any code enforcement issues with the property?
Uh, I'm not familiar with any, but, but, but I also haven't looked into that very much, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, for letting me speak. Do you know a little bit about the property to your questions? It was unable to be rented because of the condition of the low-lying water in our drainage, the city's drainage area. The, the owner was doing work on it. And I saw the property and it was, it had done, he had done nice work on it. He boarded the windows because he was having, he could not, no one would rent it because it looked so bad. And in terms of the, the water, what was happening there, and he started having damage done. So he had to board. He had rocks through the windows. It's a pretty, it's a beautiful location, but it's pretty isolated. So he boarded the windows. So there were no violations. It just couldn't be rented because of the physical environment around it.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number seven. Can you come up front, please?
My name is Dave Ozzy, fourth ward. Looking at this address, is this in the Gold Coast area? Okay. I just wondered if there's any, any historic ramifications kind of stuff or?
No, it's not. It's actually not in the Homburg Historic District. It's outside it. Yeah. And I don't know if it's history really, but it's not, it's outside that district.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number seven is a motion awarding the contract for the two thousand nineteen Alley Resurfacing Project to Tri-City Blacktop Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of ninety-four thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a motion approving a three-year interdepartmental land lease agreement renewal with community planning and economic development for the FY twenty through FY twenty-two at the Davenport Municipal Airport. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a motion approving a three-year interdepartmental land lease agreement renewal with Davenport Parks and Recreation for the FY twenty through FY twenty-two at the Davenport Municipal Airport. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number ten is a motion awarding the contract for the Division Street Soccer Complex Parking Lot resurfacing to Tri-City Blacktop Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of ninety-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And finally, item number eleven is a motion approving change order number one in the amount of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the Skybridge Window Repair Project Precision Builders Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Condon, would you set the agenda, please?
I will move to put all items on consent.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign?
Um, aye to all but number six.
Okay, that being noted?
Yep. Keep it on discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? For number six to stay on discussion? Is it six? Yes. And the rest to consent? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Uh, that concludes Public Works for this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Condon. Brian, did you get that on the one item on discussion? Yeah, thank you. Our last area to be discussed is finance and Alderman Natson will lead the discussion. Alderman Clul will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the discussion items for finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents to convey city-owned parcels Echo zero zero one four dash twelve and Echo zero zero one four dash thirteen Willis and Renee Simmons petitioners. Anyone from the public want to discuss?
Counsel? Very good.
Number two is a resolution setting a public hearing to grant an overhead electric easement to Mid-Ameri, Mid-American Energy. Anybody from the public? Counsel? All right. Number three, resolution awarding a contract for the rehabilitation of fourteen twelve West Fourteenth Street to reconstruction LLC of DeWitt, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed two hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. CIP H Hotel Mike two hundred. Anyone from the public? Counsel? Very good. Item number four, resolution awarding a contract for the rehabilitation of sixteen nineteen West Pleasant Street to River Valley Homes of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-one. See a project Hotel Mike two hundred. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Very good. And last item, item number five, resolution approving a contract with the Humane Society of Scott County for animal control services and directing the city administrator to amend the FY twenty budget by one hundred and twenty-eight thousand and four dollars to include the additional contract amount. Anyone from the public with to comment on this? Counsel? And just to be clear, and Mr. Wright, you can confirm, this adds benchmarks and criteria for response times and, and stuff like that to make sure we're tracking. Thank you, saying yes. Very good. Anybody, well, I asked for public already, but come on up.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yep, fair enough.
But I, I, I don't, I don't think we should give any extra money to the Humane Society. They have not done their job over the years with the money that has been given by the city of Davenport. We have multiple complaints by our postal workers being bit by dogs. And I, I, I'm not very happy with the, the board that is being, that is running the Humane Society. It's all being run by attorneys. And I, I think the city should deny all funds to the Humane Society, any additional funds, until they get their act together.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public then? Okay. Alderman Grip.
Just wanted to say thank you to staff for continuing this negotiation. I know when we get into these bigger contracts, kind of like the, the, the city towing issue where the contract is so big and the requirements are so difficult to meet that we have such few bidders. And I really didn't care for the hybrid idea of the, the city doing animal control. I think it is better to be done with a nonprofit. I think at this point, the only nonprofit that can hit the requirement is the Humane Society. And I think that the council has been pretty clear, as, as this gentleman pointed out as well, that we need to make sure that the contract is enforceable, that there are standards and metrics that they're meeting. And we look forward to seeing what those are. But thank you for continuing to negotiate and get back to a better place.
Alderwoman Rosson.
Oh, yes, thank you, Chair. I was actually just going to add to address your question and Alderman Grip touched on it a little bit, that the, one of the pieces with the metrics, one of the things we've been trying hard to do with this council is hold groups, entities that we give money to that are in the budget accountable for those public dollars. So there will be metrics in this contract and they will be required to come to us with presentations on the data, the details of the numbers. So my expectation is that we would see, you know, for the city of Davenport, how many calls they've had, the timeframe to get out to get an animal, you know, what that timeframe is. And the whole point of getting that data is to look at from their perspective and ours, what efficiencies there are, what areas they can improve on, and what things aren't working well. So that's a big change from what we've had in the past. In the past, we had nothing in place and this time we will have some accountability. So I feel very good about the new contract going in. I think staff, Brandon, Brandon was almost our animal control officer for a little bit there, did a good job, you know, getting this pulled together and back in place. So I'm looking forward to some metrics from them. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, you heard everybody, we're, I think we're united up here in making sure that this new contract and the staff and city administrator is also nodding her head. The enforcement and keeping us informed, basically monthly of what's going on, the response times and what we have had in the past. We, we, because we're doing this, we wanted to put some, quite frankly, some teeth, lack of a better word, in there to make sure this works out right. So please keep, keep us tracking. Anyone else? Any other counsel? Okay, thank you. And then, of course, we have some information below purchases of ten thousand to fifty thousand for your information. So I'll ask Alderman Clul to recommend an agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that all items be moved forward to the consent agenda.
Okay. There's a motion, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Natson and Alderman Clul. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, and motions this evening? Seeing none, if there's anyone public with business that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, if there's anyone public with business that would like to speak this evening?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First of all, I had a question about the railroad issue. Has the city council or anybody that is discussing the railroad issue gone out and discussed this with U. S. Senators or representatives to get their help or maybe any, any candidates who are running for those positions? Have they been included in discussion at all?
A little bit. This is a listening session at this point, since it wasn't an agenda-specific item on the agenda. So we don't respond at this point, but afterwards, if you'd like, we've got our Public Works Director and staff that can answer that question.
Well, my, my concern is, is, you know, the, the railroad, it has a history of getting their own way. And I, I just want to make sure that we have representatives from the federal level helping the city of Davenport with the discussion of what's going on on our riverfront. Okay? I would also like to have that committee discuss with the railroad. Anytime there is a flood in the future, that they find other ways to reroute their railroad. I know in the past is that the first time that I, I remember that they had gone through a, a flood. I mean, o- other times they have rerouted, so I, I'm not sure why they, they did that. I, I realize there was flooding out in the west part of state, but I'm sure there's other routes so that they could avoid a Davenport. One other issue is the issue on fireworks. I would like to recommend the city council to ban fireworks and especially in residential areas. I'm from the fourth ward. I live on Lombard Street and there's probably only twenty or thirty feet between houses. So I talked to the police about this issue and they said, and basically it's an act of God, you know, where the fireworks land, to me, that is an act of stupidity by my neighbor, an act of God. But there, there are safety issues, you know, because I, I have found fireworks close to, to my house. There was one year that fireworks landed on my wife's car, leaving black marks on the car. So I would like the, the city council to consider, I, I know there's going to be discussion here in the near future, but I would like to see them consider banning all fireworks and leave it just to, to the professionals on the commercial.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Anybody else?
Dwayne Womack, Street Friends Quad Cities, first ward, right? I'd like to thank everybody for thinking of the people and for the heat coming up and opening up some of the things. The problem I have with that a little bit is at five o'clock, when those places shut down, it's still extremely hot. So our street friends are still out there with no place to go. So on that, on that thing. The second thing, we have six hundred and fifty in the Quad Cities homeless and the whole Quad Cities. And these people have no place to go. We have a limited amount of shelters that we've talked about. And so if they go right now, they're staying in alleyways, dumpsters, cars. We tried to set up a guy a few weeks ago in a park, way away from everything. And at eleven o'clock at night, the police came and did their job and told him they had to move or he's going to police, or the police station be arrested. So is there any place we can talk about where these people can go and set up a tent so they're safe? They're not bothering the police. They're not bothering anybody else. You know, I, I don't know what else to do but ask. And I know that y'all, everybody knows the, the situation probably better than I do. But the Kings Harvest Shelter, where there's eight to ten people there now, I mean, we have a couple of canopies up for them, but they're still getting soaking wet. They're sleeping on the concrete. And I understand that we can't spend billions of dollars on, on this, but when we're spending over a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars on animal shelter, it doesn't make sense to me. Our animals that are on the street and loose get a place to go. These people are sweating and nearly dying out there. They're going to the hospital every other day for heat and stuff. It's bad enough in the winter, but now it's hot and we can, I can only do so much. We have a bunch of friends doing a lot of stuff, taking water and stuff to these people. But if we could get a piece of property where they're not causing trouble with the police and the police aren't having to mess with them, wasting their time for that, it would be fantastic. So any help from y'all would be fantastic and I'm willing to listen or go to any meetings to help these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Are there any other public with business or with, from city officials this eve- this evening? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. You're very welcome. No, thank you.